All right, it is seven o'clock. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order for the regular city council meeting for Monday, June twenty second, two twenty. Uh, let's go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, Barb, will you, will you call the roll, please?
Roland.
Here.
Bizard.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Did I lose everybody? Nope, I got somebody. So I am. Yes, ma'am.
Is it just me or is, uh, the mayor's?
Should we lost the mayor?
I think we lost her in the.
We lost Sammy.
Hallie, can you check my audio?
I can. Cause you're paused. Think your internet connection is slow. You're not muted.
Let me go and take this upstairs then. Bear with me. Hallie, can you let them know that I've called for a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, this is Bellinger. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you.
Second, Rhines.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes. I think we lost her again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm getting myself set up here, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm looking to see if we have any audience participation for this evening.
Uh, we do have Earl Wolf in the audience.
Okay, hi, Earl.
Yeah.
Oh, we have Jane Reagan. We also have Jane Reagan that just joined us.
All right, hi, Jane. So we have an opportunity for audience participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? No audience participation. Okay, I'm moving forward. Everybody can hear me. Show of hands. Hear me. Everybody good? Okay, uh, moving along then, I'm looking for approval of the council meeting minutes for June eighth, twenty twenty.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Weiss. Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll for the council meeting minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty?
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
All right, now, uh, Noah, you had an opportunity to take a look at accounts payable for this evening.
Yes, and I also sent an email to Cory and all the members to look at some specific items just for some clarification. Hopefully, everybody got, everybody got the answers and were satisfied with those.
Okay.
Well, I would like to make a motion to pay checks thirteen A dated six eight of twenty twenty through check seven three two nine six dated six twelve of twenty twenty in a total of fifty thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents as listed on pages, uh, item seven, page one, item seven, page two, and item seven, page three of the council packet of June twenty two, twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Noah.
Second, Smith.
Thank you, Jane. Yes.
Roy Weiss has a question.
Yes. Yes, Councilman Weiss.
Yes, uh, the two checks and probably for Cory, I don't know if Scott's on for the Sterns Drilling and Strata Environmental Services, uh, one for six thousand something and one for twenty-nine hundred for water observation while abandonment. Um, I don't think this is what we were talking about, about the repairs. Is this something different?
Or you're on mute?
Thank you. Uh, yes, Steph, that was for the original work that was done to abandon the first of the two wells and then the work that happened where we got only so far before we had to stop and come to council with the solution. So that is, that represents our original budget for the project was about ten thousand dollars. Um, so that is not what has not been done yet, which council discussed at the last meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding accounts payable? Okay, we have a motion and a support. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to our action items for this evening. Uh, we have several, so we'll get started. Uh, the first is the reappointment of Earl Wolf to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Thank you for joining us tonight, Earl.
Make a motion to reappoint Earl Wolf to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Noah. Barb, will you? Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland. Roland.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our next action item, we have the reappointment of Paul Joseph to the Economic Development Corporation, Tifa two A, Tifa two B, for a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-six.
So moved, Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Rhines.
Thank you, Dan. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next in the packet, we have a memo from Rachel regarding twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget amendments. And Cory, would you like to go ahead and take this?
Sure, this is, uh, basically just a simple budget amendment as we get to year end. Um, as the memo stated, we had expenses incurred for the August twenty twenty election in this fiscal year. And so you'll see a budget amendment for that department of three thousand dollars. And we were able to offset that with savings in the Community and Economic Development Department. Uh, that's typically where additional fees associated with site plan reviews, special land use, uh, applications would, would be charged through McKenna's contract. We just didn't have a lot of those this year. So, um, it's a net zero impact and this was the final budget amendment as we look to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions for Cory regarding this budget amendment? Okay, if there's no questions, I'm looking for a motion to move it forward.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendments for the general fund, one of what is presented. Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Rhines.
All right, we had, uh, Dan Rhines coming in with that second. Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, no questions, I'll ask Barb to call the roll, please.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith. Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, next item on our action list is the Ingham County Parks and Trails Millage Grant Agreement. And this is for the, uh, additional, uh, trailhead kayak launch down at the old, uh, car wash lot, uh, just, uh, before going over the bridge on Grand River. So Cory, why don't go ahead and, uh, give us an update on that?
Sure, thank you. So council and the DDA each passed a resolution back in September of twenty nineteen to apply for this grant. Uh, we were scored second out of many grant applications and that was a good indicator that we would get an award. The award, however, had to wait until the March twenty twenty election where the point five mil, uh, trails millage was up for renewal. Uh, that did pass and the county subsequently forwarded this grant agreement. Um, so we, we went through a two-step process. We started with the DDA last week. They passed a resolution uh, supporting the approval and recommending the approval of the grant agreement and committing to the fifteen thousand dollar match. Um, it's about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar grant. So all told, the project is a little under a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, and that will add a parking area as well as a launch for the river access. Uh, the, the project goes back at least twenty years in planning. Um, you know, as we were putting together our application, reading old DDA minutes from when the DDA purchased the car wash, the old car wash site, uh, the vision was to have, um, a place exactly for what it is we are trying to do. So it's an exciting potential project. Um, council's asked to approve the grant agreement so that we can enter into it and, um, begin the, the planning or the design stage of the work. Um, the only thing I want to mention before, uh, requesting a vote is that the eventual, uh, contracting with a company to do the work will be contingent on the DDA passing a plan amendment. And we haven't done that yet because we are still working through the boardwalk grant, uh, replace, the boardwalk replacement grant. Um, so the goal would be by the end of this summer to have one plan amendment that incorporates both projects, which would start at DDA, go through a noticing process, and then land with city council eventually for a vote to approve.
Right. This is an exciting project. It's nice to finally see that space being uh, utilized. Um, it'll, it'll be a great addition to the DDA area, but you know, I, I think even though it's in the DDA, DDA area, will Parks and Rec have a little, uh, bit of skin in the game with this, Cory?
Certainly, I think, you know, the, the design for that whole corridor has been influenced by a couple of our different boards over the years. Um, you know, the, the design work that needs to still happen, you know, we'll have an opportunity for some input. Although it is, it is pretty much what we said it is, is parking and a, an access point, uh, into the river.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any questions for Cory regarding this agreement? No? All right, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward then.
I make a motion to, to approve the grant agreement between the County of Ingham and City of Williamson for the downtown Williamson Water Trailhead and Launch. Rhines.
Thank you, Dan.
Second, Weiss.
Thank you, Weiss. If there's no further discussion, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much. Again, it's exciting, uh, to have this project moving forward and that's a, a nice grant to, uh, be a recipient of. Next, we have the Middle Street Parking Lot Construction and Engineering Change Orders. Cory?
Thank you. This is the second of two, uh, DDA pass-through items. Um, so the DDA also met last week and considered these. These are the two final change orders for our parking lot project that was just recently completed. Uh, there's a request for two motions. The first is for the construction contract, uh, with a change order of six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. The second motion is for the engineering side with Spicer and that is a request for an eight thousand dollar change order. Uh, the memo that went to DDA and then subsequently to council, there's a table that shows a summary of the costs. And all told, we are about forty-one hundred dollars over our original budget. Um, which, you know, we made a couple decisions in the field that, that really influenced that. Uh, probably the most major of which is that we, we went ahead and put the base layer of asphalt on in the late fall. Um, in a, in a little bit of a window where we had before, we weren't going to be able to do that for the winter months. And because of that, there were two areas that had, um, less than desirable soil quality because we had had some frost. And so we had to thicken up the asphalt and do a, a spot repair in the base layer before we put the final layer on. And so that was something that the DDA was aware of when we made that call. Um, and, and so we're seeing that here in the, the total, uh, budget. We did use up our contingency, um, in, in getting through this project, but I think all told, uh, it's a really good project and should last us hopefully a really long time, uh, in that quadrant. So with that, uh, we are requesting approval of those two motions and that will allow us to finalize the project in the current fiscal year.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for questions to Cory. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
I do. I, Cory, what was the total amount that Spicer received on this, uh, project?
Um.
Am I missing that?
Nope, that's in there somewhere. Our total contract amount was fifty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
And that was for all the engineering and then the added there at the end?
Yes.
Okay, what was that add for there at the end that the engineering cost?
This final change order is eight thousand dollars.
Okay, and that was just for the asphalt repair or?
That was because our construction project went into the second season.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions? Dan?
Did any of that have to do with having to remeasure out any of that fence line that had to be moved slightly? Or is it all based on moving into the, the second season?
I would say, Dan, it's mostly from the second season. Um, the fence line issue, we actually had that done pro bono by the surveyor.
Okay.
Thank you, good question.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Cory? Okay, I'm looking for a motion then to move this.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the change order number two for Williamson DDA Parking Lot Project to authorize an add increase of six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents for the construction contract with TCI Incorporated, Michigan.
Thank you.
Second, Rhines.
Thank you. No further discussion. I'll ask Barb to call the roll for the first motion.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Looking for a motion, uh, for the, uh, the second action.
Weiss, I'll make a motion to approve work change directive number two of the Spicer Engineering Contract for the Williamson DDA Parking Lot Project totaling eight thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no further discussion, Barb, will you call the roll for the second motion, please?
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. Thank you, Barb. Uh, moving to action item eight F. It is the second reading of the ordinance to amend the City of Williamson zoning ordinances. Uh, we had several of these on our council packet last meeting. Um, we had a pretty healthy discussion and some information. Cory, do you have anything to add for this?
Uh, nothing further. This, this would, uh, be the second reading and would adopt them. They become effective, I think, seven days after adoption.
Great. Does anybody have any additional questions, uh, for Cory at this time regarding these, uh, zoning ordinance text amendments?
Yes, they become effective after publication.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. If there's no questions, I'm looking for a motion to move this action forward.
I make a motion to recommend to, to city council to, the approval of zoning ordinance text amendments pertaining to municipal standards for streets, public water and sewer, performance bonds, decks, attached garages, driveways and streets as further outlined in the attached exhibit. Rhines.
Second, Smith.
Thank you both. There's no further discussion. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Smith.
Yes.
Bizard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Roland.
Okay. All right, uh, motion carries. We have our last, uh, action item of the evening and that would be the solid waste collection contract extension. Uh, Cory, would you like to, uh, fill us in on this?
Sure, thank you. Uh, so in front of council, there's actually two proposals or two options for an extension to our, uh, garbage contract with Granger. We've worked with Granger for, for many years now. Um, the last contract extension was done in twenty seventeen. It was a three-year deal. And at the time, the, the rates were held flat for the entirety of the three-year extension. Um, that is set to expire on June thirtieth and we'd worked with Granger, uh, to look at two proposals. One would be a one-year term. The other would be a three-year extension. Um, the one-year extension features a five percent rate increase for each of the items that are covered under the contract, which would be your garbage, your curbside recycling, yard waste and bag tags, um, and corresponding rates for senior discounts. The three-year extension option features three percent annual inflation increases, um, through twenty twenty-four. So in the memo, you'll see that, um, while we have two options, staff has recommended the one-year option uh, with the understanding that if we do the one-year option, we would likely look at bidding this contract likely in December, January. Typically with a garbage contract, you want to do bidding at least six months out because if you do change contractors, you know, that's a pretty intensive process as far as switching out all the bins and, you know, potential route changes and things like that. Um, we will be coming up on ten years, um, under this current, uh, arrangement with Granger. And that may be an appropriate time to look at testing the market. That said, um, you know, in my two years here, I, I can't count any complaints, any, uh, concerns that have been expressed about Granger, uh, which is rare. I've never had that happen in my time in municipal gov, municipal government, whether it's, you know, a contractor missed a street one day or, you know, had something goofy with the billing, um, that has not existed. So from, from staff's perspective, it's a very solid service. Um, in many ways, it's out of sight, out of mind. Um, and that's in particular because Granger still handles the billing, um, which was another surprise to me when I, when I got here. Everywhere else I've worked, uh, the municipality handles the direct billing to the customers. And, you know, we just would pay the, uh, garbage contractor directly. And so from staff's perspective, that's a benefit because that's one less service or utility, if you will, that we're, you know, coordinating, collecting, billing for. Um, and so that's still a great aspect of this sort of legacy agreement we have with Granger. Um, that said, I do want to note that Scott Truman, who is our sales rep, is on the call. Um, if there's any specific questions that he may be able to address about service levels or the, the proposals themselves. Um, but with that, that is the staff recommendation. Um, and welcome any questions, comments or concerns.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Cory or for the representative that's with us this evening? I see, uh, Noah and I also, I think Dan, so I'm gonna, uh, call on Dan first because his finger went up first.
Cory, um, you said this had been a, a kind of a, a ten-year timeframe when we've been working with Granger in this way. At any point in that ten years, had we put out for bid to see what, uh, how, what their rates were in comparison? When was the last time we did that?
I believe the last time that was done, Dan, was in twenty eleven, ahead of the twenty eleven entering of that agreement. Um, the two contract extensions were done similar to what we have tonight where, you know, we worked exclusively with them to do an extension.
Noah?
Uh, my question is to Cory and to Scott. Uh, in the relation to executive orders or the governor mandating more recycling coming down the road, um, how is their company gonna handle that if they require everybody to recycle?
For, for that, I'd like to ask Scott Truman to discuss if, if he's willing.
Yeah, sure. Um, we're actively a part of one-one-five and, uh, the conversations that are having, uh, have municipalities recycle more. Um, we really adhere to every, as Granger does, we're already adhering to what is being required. As I understand that, there'll be a higher expectation on municipalities with part one-one-five. And they, I, I hear there's talk of grants. I know it's in committee right now. I, uh, I don't know how fast it's moving forward.
Thank you and thank you for joining us this evening too. We appreciate it. Are there any other questions? Jean, did you ever hand up? Yes, and John, you'll come next. Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, so moving into the city, this is our third, third year here now, but, um, both services I had in Michigan prior to moving into the city cost more than what I paid for Granger. Um, but with ten years, having great service, no complaints, um, excellent communication, like as a customer, uh, you know, end user on my side, you know, they communicate amazingly, um, super reliable. Uh, is there, is there really a benefit to putting it out to bid and maybe losing such a solid service to somebody that might undercut a little bit? But boy, we might pay for that on the other end through crappy service when we know they're very fairly priced and provide an amazing service now.
Right. Cory, I'll go ahead and open to you, um, to respond to that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question, Jean. Um, I think that's the risk you run whenever you put something out to bid. Um, you know, if you have a service provider that has done you well, um, you know, there's a tendency to try to keep that relationship going. I think at the same time though, as a, as a city, as a city council body and staff, you know, we do have an obligation to attempt to look out for the. I think at the same time though, as a, as a city, as a city council body and staff, you know, we do have an obligation to attempt to look out for the best, uh, rates that exist for the best service. And so that was where, you know, the recommendation was, you know, ten years, it, it's a, it's a, it's a good length of time, um, to potentially, you know, test the market and see what's out there. I would also say, and I, I guess I'd ask Tim to weigh in if, if I'm mistaken here, but when you bid, it's lowest and best bid. And so through the proposal, there, there's criteria that a city would use to determine what is lowest and best. And so that gives you some freedom, I think, to make a, a sound professional decision once you get and receive those bids.
That's correct. You, you don't have to automatically take the lowest bidder. It, you are correct. It's the lowest responsive bidder. And you can take into consideration other factors, including the quality of service, uh, the, the track record with the city. Um, but you're right, you do have an obligation to at least see what potential cost savings there could be, but they can't necessarily be outweighed by, uh, detrimental service that might come with a new vendor.
Okay. John, oh, sorry, Scott, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, give you the opportunity and then I'll call on John for his question.
I don't think that, uh, John can go, please.
Oh, okay.
My que- I got a couple of questions here. I was, I, I guess, um, putting it out for bid, I, I agree with you doing the one-year, but I, my other question is to Scott that, uh, is there any sort of, uh, rates or anything that you provide special for city residents since we have a contract with you for larger containers? Like roll-off containers, uh, like that? And I'll let you go ahead and answer there.
Um, so I, uh, I've inherited this contract. I, I wasn't part of the founding of it. This is the first time I've been part of, uh, an extension here at the city of Williamson. So there, there are no bulk items associated with your account. Um, it is typical for us to provide discounts on roll-off work. Um, roll-off is a very highly competitive field. And amongst the contracts I've done now, which have been, I guess about twenty, um, I've never had a roll-off involved with what we do. Put bulk items as comments, uh, to be a part of the conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
Um,
Go ahead.
Right, just for a second, so.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the concern of a ten-year con- ten years with us. Um, I think I would also like to share that the city of Mason has been working with Granger Waste Services since nineteen seventy-seven. And they, they haven't had any need to go out to bid because of how confident we have them. Um, I appreciate hearing the, the nice words from Councilman Smith. Um, Granger prides itself on customer service. We work really hard for that. And, uh, and I'll share this with you as well. Um, Granger has four core foundational values. It is safety, and that's safety for our associates. It's care, it's service, and that's for our customers and for our associates. And the last one is profit. And when I got to Granger, I thought that was quite cool for them to speak about profit, but they speak about it openly. Because when they talk about profit, it's a reasonable profit and we adhere to that. Um, I welcome you to check with your new rate communities and you'll find your rate is very handsome from the longevity of the relationship with. Your rate right now is less than fifty percent of what the standard rate is. So I, I say this next part with, with sincerity, and I hope it doesn't come off wrong. If this should go out to bid, I don't think I'll be able to bring the same kind of a rate to you. Um, I'm really well aware of what the competitive marketplace is. I know that you have a waste management, um, transfer station in Williamson. I welcome you to, to see what they talk about, their municipalities and how they work with them and, and their plans for increasing rates with them. I've went up against waste management several times and I know my rates right now are far more competitive than that. The, the next opportunity you would have would be Elchens out of Fowlerville. And, and I went up against them too and, and they are at the size of Granger. Granger provides a reasonable rate so that they continue long-term relationships and keep those partnerships going. We've lost the fair about it. So, so I feel that the rates we're providing are, are very fair and extremely competitive.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. And, and, and I, as a, as a resident, I, I've, that, you know, some of us are lifetime residents here and we've always had, um, very, very good service and even with additional items to be picked up. Never a problem, um, very, very good rates. Dan, you had something?
I, I guess I'm wondering if we can, well, when does this contract expire, Corey? You said the thirtieth?
Yes, sir. Yes.
So then that's before our next meeting. Um, because I was wondering if we could informally call Waste Management and Elchens, but we don't, we don't have the time for, uh.
Well, I, I, I think, Dan, we've got two options here. So, um, even though we have a staff recommendation, uh, we have two options on this memo. Um, are there any other questions?
Well, I'd like to state something real quick, if I may.
Yes, John.
So I have experience going into the transfer station and I don't really want to speak badly of waste management, but if what I am gonna tell you for the safety aspect and the things that go on that I see with Granger and everything, their equipment is up kept to a very quality standard that I see of other trucks driving around. And I look at what they've done and I give you an example. They didn't take a couple of my bags one time because they were outside of the can. I made a phone call and I had a gentleman come in his pickup and pick up those bags of trash. So when he talks about their customer service, I think he's spot on right there. Um, I do worry about our rates going up and even on the five-year rate, I really think that that's pretty reasonable considering that you look at the cost of inflation and what it costs to dispose of items in general. So, um, if you don't mind, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we-
Absolutely, John.
Uh, con- the con- the five-year contract. I believe it's five years.
Great.
Three, three years.
It's a three-year extension.
Sorry, three-year extension. Excuse me.
Okay, so we have a motion. Okay, so we have a motion from Bizzard, uh, for the three-year extension and we had multiple council members, uh, give their, uh, second, uh, support for that. Do we have further discussion on this? All right, uh, Barb, I'll ask you to call the roll then for that.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Okay. Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
All right. Uh, thank you very much, Scott. Thank you for taking the time to be with us this evening, to be able to answer questions, uh, from our council members. Uh, we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the confidence. Just to share, so the, and you've, you've proved them, thank you, the bet three percent. That literally is a cost of inflation. Um, it came back last year, it was three point two was the national average. So we're two percent below that.
Okay.
So, so we are, it's basically flat is what we're looking. But thank you.
Well, thank.
Happy to keep servicing, uh, City of Williamson.
Thank you very much. Feel free to, uh, you know, join us or, or bring information to us at any time. Um, you know, through a council meeting, uh, like, uh, multiple people have said, uh, notification, um, from Granger is just spot on, especially, you know, holiday pickups or if there's a delay in a route or something like that. So, uh, we, we do appreciate the service that you provide.
Yes, ma'am. If, if you're interested in, in some additional questions about recycling, I would hap- be happy to schedule my, uh, community relations manager to come in and speak with, uh, um, with the council. He's our resident expert on recycling.
Okay.
We're doing it some communities right now where we're actually holding, uh, recycling workshops to try to help people understand what is recyclable and what isn't, what's the best ways to do that, so.
Great. Um, I'd ask that you'd follow up with Corey, um, on that so that he can, uh, put it on an agenda or get information to us, um, so that we can take a look at that because it sounds like it's gonna come down the pipe, um, at some point. And so any information you can provide us, um, would be great.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes our action items for the evening. Uh, so we'll move right along to our discussion items, which is the building and zoning services. And Corey, you put a, uh, great memo, uh, together for us. This has been an ongoing, uh, concern, discussion point for council, especially during, um, uh, goal-setting workshops and what we can do to, um, do a better job, uh, with our contracted services and especially, um, you know, building and planning and zoning and, and how we can, um, be more available. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and turn this right over to you because I think what you've put together and worked on i- is, is, um, very promising.
All right, thank you. So, um, we came together back in November and talked about this topic in a work session. And at that time, we had had some initial conversations with Livingston County, um, which has a full-service building department that does all the trades and building inspections, um, about a potential relationship with them. The feedback, I think, from the work session centered on, uh, having more detailed fee schedule. Um, there were some questions about particular fees like re-roofs. Um, there were some questions about our existing contracts and, and being sure that, um, you know, we knew what the exit clauses stated. And so we, we looked at that information, continued to work with Livingston County on a, on a path forward, um, to work with them. And that resulted in basically a scope of work, um, for them to provide full, full, uh, building department services to us. Uh, we had an intergovernmental agreement drafted in February, March timeframe, um, to formalize what that would look like. And then we had the coronavirus hit. And so with, with both parties, um, you know, initially not having meetings and uh, dealing with that in our organizations, we, we basically put pause on the issue for a month or two. Um, as Livingston County has returned back to work and, and their boards have started to meet, um, we've decided to move forward in bringing this proposal forward to council. Uh, prior to bringing it though for a vote, because it has been some, some time, wanted to bring it basically in a package to council to consider, um, ask questions about and providing some of that additional information. We have the full fee schedule included as well as our existing fee schedule, um, that shows, uh, a comparison. In many cases, it is difficult to do an apples-to-apples when it comes to like a new house build or a commercial project because the fees are often based on these multipliers, um, that are attached in the, the rate schedules. We did do a simple, uh, case study of a, of a new build in town that was six hundred ninety-seven dollars with our current schedule and under the Livingston County schedule was five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, many of the other fees, especially in the trades are similar. Uh, you, you may find ten dollars of difference one way or the other. Um, the base level for like mechanical and electrical, you know, the base application and inspection, they're both fifty dollars. Uh, but the plumbing from Livingston County is sixty compared to fifty today. So, you know, it is, it's, it's not exactly, you know, one side is cheaper, one side is more. Uh, but I feel comfortable that they're comparable enough. And in, in many cases for the larger type projects, um, we think that we will have a net reduction for, um, the residents and businesses that are paying those. Um, we also looked at, you know, again, the, the existing contracts, um, with both AGS and McKenna on the planning side. Those both have sixty-day notice clauses. Um, and so that's what we'd be looking at as a transition. So on the building department side, um, Livingston County, their board passed a resolution to support the concept of offering services outside of their jurisdiction. Um, that passed earlier this year and then they have been running this same intergovernmental agreement through their approval process. They have multiple boards and committees that have to meet and review before the full board takes a vote. And so it looks as if though that will pass if it hasn't already. Um, that would, would give them the authority to formally offer us this, this opportunity. Um, on the planning and zoning side, what we discussed back in November is that between the zoning that AGS does and the zoning that McKenna does, we have a pot of funds that we could use to support a part-time position. Um, it, one of the questions, as I was reviewing the notes in the last couple of weeks, was well, why not full-time? And we would not be in a budget-neutral situation to, to go that route. And so it's, it was really important, especially now, um, where, where we have some uncertain revenue impacts because of sales tax decreases at the state level, um, that we, we keep this within our budget allotment. And so that would still be the plan. And actually, we included a draft of a job description for that role, um, which would handle basically our day-to-day zoning questions, but as well as give us somebody that can really take hold of our code enforcement and zoning complaints that we get. That is one area that I feel like we've not been able to, to really see things through from complaint stage to resolution stage, um, without a lot of people touching it. And, um, frankly, it, it's just something we need to do better at when we have legitimate concerns that exist in the community. Um, and so the idea would be you have somebody that can get familiar with the city, with the city zoning ordinances and our businesses and residents and offer that, you know, higher level of service. Um, that would be obviously contingent that we have an attractive job in that, you know, we can find somebody that has the skill set and the tact to be able to do that type of job, um, and, and wants it on a part-time basis. Uh, and so until we actually go out and try to do that, who knows if we'll, we'll find somebody with that skill set. Uh, but that would certainly be our intent to attempt to do that. One of the things I noted is that that piece of this puzzle, I've had some reservations on in the current environment because of our revenue uncertainty. So on the revenue side, you know, I, I just think it would be disingenuous to go through a hiring process and then come August, September, find out that our revenue decreased by X percent. Um, and we're in a, we're a layoff situation. Um, the flip side of that too is that if the economy is slow to return, we may not have the level of development and, and additions and things that have been going on pre-COVID. Um, the, the initial sense I have in town is that things are not slowing down. Um, we still have people that are talking about doing developments. We met with somebody today that's looking at doing a, a four-unit building on a lot in town. So, you know, there, there just seems to still be some interest in moving forward now. That's not applications in and ready to go, but there's still been a lot of talk. Um, so with all of that said, um, the information was provided in the packet. Uh, this was just a little bit of a background to reorient us around the discussion. And, um, it would certainly be my hope and intent to bring this forward for action. Um, but certainly you want to make sure that we, we've addressed questions or have time to still address questions before we flip that switch and, uh, you know, have, ask council to make that vote.
John, I see your hand up. I'm gonna jump in real quick though. Uh, one question I do have for you, Corey, is, um, when you say part-time, what are we looking at as far as hours per week? I know that we, our whole intent has been to have somebody be present on a daily basis, but what would the, what would the hours look like?
We would be somewhere between twenty and twenty-four hours a week.
Okay.
And one of the things that I think could make that part-time position more attractive is that we offer some flexibility in what days or hours that would exist. Um, I have a little bit of experience when I worked in Ohio where we had a part-time person that was, was sort of the building and zoning intake role. It was a part-time role and we, we, we basically worked with that person to come up with a schedule that was favorable to them, but also the building community. Usually, the building community wants to get in early in the day. Um, and so, you know, that has to be considered as well. And so I can't say for certain that we would say it's gonna be five days a week, but it could be three or four. Um, and, and I think it would be nice to retain that flexibility as a, as a way to try to make a part-time job that doesn't pay extremely well, but it's gonna pay well. Um, well enough, I think, to find a, a quality candidate. But if we can't offer, you know, a higher rate or benefits, you know, maybe we can offer a schedule that, that works with somebody's situation.
Okay. John, you had a question? You're on mute.
I remember when we talked about this, uh, a while ago. Has it ever been explored about Williamson Township utilizing, say if we hired a planner full-time and have that amount on contract for a couple of days a week? Because I know we both run into the same situations in our neighboring township then. You know what I mean? I'm just trying to find a way because like you said, it's hard to find somebody part-time. But if we can spread that and still, you know, utilize the office space within town because, you know, Williamson is the whole area technically, you, when you think about it. I, I don't know. I'm just trying to think out- I I don't know. I'm just trying to think outside the box and try to find a way to draw the job in, you know?
Yeah. So so, John, I did chat with Wanda Blumquist about that concept. And I think that there there's a interest from both sides to explore that. One of the things, as we talked about it internally as staff, that that we just we decided in in bringing this forward is we would like to have some control over how we structure it, who we hire. And and so that was the direction that I feel comfortable recommending and then, you know, potentially opening that up once we've identified either a candidate or or a a a plan for that individual. So that that gives us the ability to, I guess, control the hiring process as opposed to to have an a agreement in place already. That said, if you advertise a part-time position, um, you know, that could be something we talk about during the processes. If they're interested in full-time, there could be this other idea um out there. But there's nothing in writing. It was simply a conversation. Um, and there's a mutual interest there. And I certainly think the spirit of that intergovernmental cooperation is what we're trying to do on the building department side. And so there there's potential that that could work there as well.
Okay. No, I I I agree. I agree. It would start out as a part-time position and then, you know, then you go from there. So we do control the hiring process of that. And I agree with you. Okay.
All right. Tim, go ahead.
Um, Mayor Gilroy
Yes.
also has his hand up.
Okay, all right. Um, Tim, go ahead and then I'll uh move right to Jeff Rowland.
Thank you. Um, as you can see, I represented Livingston County in this, and I represented them on a number of these types of intergovernmental agreements. This is a standard form of the agreement. We do have a a signed waiver of conflict, a letter from both clients, both the county and the city on this. Again, it's standard and it's with regard to their standard rates. It's my understanding that it is up for approval tonight before the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. And once they notify me that they've adopted a resolution to that effect, I will put the date of that into the approval box on the signature page. And then it will go to the county and that they will probably then present it to the city for signature. The contract by its terms takes effect when it's fully executed by both parties. And as uh the city manager mentioned, you do have a sixty-day termination on your existing contract with AGS. So those types of uh timing uh considerations have to be taken into account.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Jeff Rowland.
Thanks, Sammy. Um, so Corey, I'm just curious, um, you know, what with with the absence of this position currently in Williamson, what do you believe our overall, I I guess, exposure is for uh potential enforcement that we're not currently doing? I mean, do we do we think that this is a scenario that the the city's leaving, you know, uh a number of uh non-compliance items on the table or you know, have we done an analysis there of what we really think the overall exposure is?
Uh, yes. So our code enforcement, zoning enforcement, international property maintenance code enforcement is done on a complaint basis. We have a file that currently has somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five uh outstanding cases that have started based on a complaint raised, um whether it's a a falling-down garage, a a junk car, um, or, you know, a sign without a permit. And that that caseload, many of those date several years. And the reason I think that these take so long is is twofold. One is that we currently lack the position to see those through from beginning to end. Um. In other words, you know, I've always found that that projects, when there's somebody that that is the leader of it, that can take the ball from one side to the other and and pull the resources they need to get it done, that's when you're most successful. And I think because we we have a number of ordinances um or international property maintenance codes or zoning ordinance areas that we get complaints about, but we we just don't have ownership of it. And and so you could say, is that a management issue? Um, maybe, and and possibly so. Um, on the flip side, the 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 cases, they they just, they go back a long time. And it's been frustrating for me to to come here and, you know, deal with people that tell me it's it's I mean, the worst one was a fifteen-year issue with a with an accessory structure that, you know, frankly, should have been cited and dealt with a long time ago. And and I'm I'm trying to clean up the pieces of these in many cases. Um. And so, you know, we are not out there being punitive. I don't believe. I think it's really the the worst issues that we have. And so the analysis is, I I I know the the folder and I know the cases and and how we touch those and not having the ability to to see those through, I think, has been a frustration um for for staff and me in particular. And I think our residents that may have to live next door to something that's frankly, you know, falling down or or concerning uh from a safety or even an aesthetic perspective. Uh, so I said it was twofold. So that's the one. And the second piece is that it it can get expensive to deal with these. Um, if you don't have a property owner that's willing to work with you and comply, there there's no recourse but to issue a municipal civil infraction, which then triggers an informal hearing at Ingle County Courthouse, which is time-intensive and you have to pay somebody to be there. Um, we often have to have our attorneys involved once it gets past the informal hearing. And it and so it takes time and it's expensive. And and so some of these, you know, there's a decision to make on is is the juice worth the squeeze of the issue that we're dealing with versus trying to let somebody have a little more time if there's not an immediate uh threat to health or safety of a neighbor or a person. And so I I think those are the two primary reasons why, you know, I felt that if we can provide better service on that aspect under the umbrella of a zoning administration position that's part-time, I feel like we can get two things improved where we can, we can really help people when they come in and they want to do something, whether it's a deck, a a new building, a new house, um, or whatever it would be that that somebody wants to work with. You know, I I think that having that that person that can get familiar with our processes um and our community and understand our or ordinances, I really think that would be a value-added without without impacting our budget and basically being a budget-neutral proposition.
Sure. Now, last question. In these types of situations, how do we measure success? If it does go forward to this point, I mean, is there, is it, is success cleaning up the backlog? Is success happy community? Um, you know, yeah, just curious how you measure that? Is it quotas? I'm hoping it's not quotas, but
No.
Like my pushes are getting cited suddenly, like they're a little
Yeah. No, I I think I think dealing with the backlog would be first and foremost. You know, Jeff, I I honestly, I haven't come up with a framework for that. I can, if that's desired. Um, and I think there's there's a good, that's a good
Price of doing business as a city. I mean, that can be it too, right?
Yeah, but I think there's a way that we could measure it, which is length of time to get service. And so whether it's your building department side or your code enforcement side, you know, we we have been keeping data on, you know, length of time from permit submission to when you leave City Hall with your your building permit. Um, and that that's not necessarily considering the zoning side where it might have to go to the planning commission. Um, we're not tracking that. We're just tracking the building department process. And I think that we can compare that. Um, you know, Livingston County has made some representations about how, you know, quick they are and how they have a full staff and they're there eight to five. Um, and and the reference checks we did seem to back up their statements um that they they are very service-driven. And so that one, there would be a path to measure it. On the code enforcement, you know, we could measure that by length of time for a case to be resolved. Um, we don't have that data per se today, although we could kind of back into it if needed. Um, but that would be, I guess, just an immediate answer to how we could could measure success and it would be hard to benchmark that, I think, because you're dealing with, you know, many cases, you try to work with people. Um, that's how I've always done it in in my career is when when you can and there's not, there's an issue, but maybe somebody needs a couple of weeks for that paycheck to come in and take care of that issue. Like, that's how we try to do business. Um, but in some cases, you know, two weeks might become a month or two months and and then it just drags on and it it needs ownership. So.
Yeah. Thanks, Sammy and Corey. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I'm gonna move to Tim because I did see that his hand was up uh just before on that second part of the question.
Yes, I wanted to speak to code enforcement. Uh, we're not the city's attorneys for the court cases on that, but I have handled that for a number of communities and we still do. You need to have, you measure success by compliance, and that's the goal of the program. It's not punitive. You're not there to punish people, but what you need to do is to make sure that people are uh incentivized to come into compliance. You do work with people. You issue a warning letter. You give them a couple extra weeks. But then you have to, you have to proceed with the ticket process. And you don't need to go through an informal hearing if it requires action to the point of getting the formal hearing right away. Yes, there would be a fine involved, but what you really want is a court order, an injunctive order that requires the property to be brought into compliance under penalty of contempt of court. That will get people going. And if they don't do that, you go back to court on a contempt hearing. Under municipal civil infractions as well, the court can order the defendant to pay the city's costs. And some places routinely simply just ask for five hundred dollars uh to cover the costs of, because that includes attorney fees and staff time for the enforcement process. So that's another incentive for people to come into compliance before it gets too far. But if it gets to that point, you have a remedy. And uh to take care of it so that it doesn't just languish because you don't want to take those extra steps. But sometimes it is necessary and you can get results. But what you have to do is make sure that the district court is willing to do what it takes. Some of them are, some take a little bit of time. Thank you.
I thi- I think that's a good way to look at it, Tim. And um, you know, hearing Corey state that there's a folder with items in there that are long in length, that doesn't, uh, we're not serving our residents well. And we know that it's complaint-driven. Um, but I, you know, there's nothing more um frustrating than to be a resident that brings a complaint to the city and then no action is taken upon it. It it I think it becomes a little bit disheartening for a resident that they're not being heard, but the but the fact of the matter is is that maybe we just don't have the staffing in place or the ability to to take care of those. And and so they they do sit idly. So I'm, I really am glad because from the time I came on council back in two thousand fifteen, this has been a goal of ours uh through multiple council members and and a former city manager, now a new city manager. And and I think that we want to do better for our residents. Um, so I'm I'm really pleased with what Corey's brought to us. And I I think that it's a good move in the right direction.
Right. And if you don't, if you don't enforce the the ordinance appropriately, then other people are going to notice that and they're gonna question why they have to come into compliance themselves. And then you really have a problem.
And we've dealt with that, too.
Yes, we have. Yeah, yeah, we have. And so, I mean, you know, I'm opening it up to any other council member, but uh we do have a recommendation here from Corey um to uh have this on um the uh on a July council packet uh for us to um take action on. So does anybody else have a question for Corey or any other concerns regarding? Uh, Gene? Oh, yes. And Holly, go ahead.
Um, Jeff Weiss and Dan Ryan both have their hands up.
Okay, all right. I'll go Gene, Jeff, Dan, right? Yeah. Gene?
Um, so a previous jurisdiction that I used to work in um kind of ran into this uh some of the same issue, but on the enforcement end, they found themselves having a challenge of, you know, who do we get to go out and actually do that enforcement arm of this? And so they created a health and safety officer position within the city and then tapped the police department and said, okay, of your officers, who wants a one, two-dollar-an-hour stipend added to their salary? And then that person was designated the health and safety officer. And so when these complaints would come in, that officer was then just specifically that one officer was the one that would be handed the file and expected to kind of like walk this through and and um help prod people along and, you know, try to get them to come into compliance. Um, and then ultimately, if they had to, to, you know, do the ticket process and and um walk that in through as well. But it was, uh, on the city's side, it was very cost-effective because they were just throwing, you know, a couple of dollars at something rather than staffing a whole nother position for it. And it was completely separate from the police department, although they used a current city employee police officer to do it. Um, it really never touched the police department itself. It was kind of kept separate as more of a city position. But I don't know if that's even something that we'd be um looking at, but the police officer was certainly happy because he got a little bit bump in pay for, you know, a little bit extra work. So anyway, just throwing it out there.
Thank you, Gene. Jeff?
Quick question. Tim, you said uh you do not represent the city for ordinance violations. Who, which law firm does?
I think it's Gormley, isn't it?
Yep, Gormley and Johnson, which is our, they do our EDC, our TIFA, DDA, and then our ordinance enforcement.
Yeah. Okay. Are they um, I I, I mean, I'm not that familiar with their law firm, but is there a reason that uh uh Tim's law firm doesn't handle the ordinance violations? And we we have two doing, to make it a little more streamlined?
Jeff, I I frankly don't know the history of that. Um, I don't know if any of the other staff knows or not, but I can certainly inquire. Or maybe maybe Tim knows that.
I'm not entirely certain on that. It may be because of uh, you know, the uh the cost of the hourly rate for litigation that we've charged to uh go out to Mason on that. Uh, I'm not certain what Gormley charges how often they deal with with cases out there, but I think that's the primary, one of the primary reasons.
Okay. And I want to ask, because uh when this does get put on the agenda and we act on it, my gut feeling is it it'd be approved at some point, but um, I don't know, I I I I know Gorman Law Firm represents uh, you know, TIFA and and I I don't know who else, but uh, just something to look at. I make it a little more streamlined, I think. But that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, uh, Dan, you're up.
Um, I think we're making a lot of good progress with this. We've been working on it for a while. I'm very happy with a lot of the things we're seeing from Livingston County in the packet. Um, you know, I I saw, I serve on the ZBA, so we get, when it gets to the ZBA, there's obviously a problem. Um, that's, that's what I get to see when we when we have our meetings. But I, I'm looking forward to, I I'm glad we're seeing a lot of progress here because frankly, I haven't been happy with a lot of the stuff McKenna's put forward in ZBA meetings, as a lot of you know. Um, I think a lot of the things we're talking about with code enforcement are, it's a good conversation. But in order to get the money to have that in-house code enforcement, we have to move forward with the Livingston County agreement to have that pot of money for that. And that uh talking about um having control of the hiring and I think that's a big thing because that's been one of my issues with AGS when it comes to the code enforcement is because we've had issues with the way they've interacted with our residents at times when it comes to code enforcement and that we haven't had any control over that later on because they they aren't our employee. Um, with hiring a part-time person to handle code enforcement and zoning and things like that, we then have that interaction. We know that person. We know how they react and and we then have control over it. Those are the the big things that I agree, the the backdated file, we need to, we need to get on top of that. But um, I, it's a, it's a fine line when it comes to a lot of this stuff. We need to make sure we're enforcing our We need to make sure we're enforcing our ordinances and things like that, but we also don't want to go down the road or anything like a, like a homeowners association where anything like that. I, I don't wanna see us start getting into that where the person's working twenty-four hours a week, so they have to fill their time twenty-four hours a week. So they're then going out looking for more violations to enforce that maybe before hadn't been reaching the uh, the level where we would enforce. That's, that's my only concern.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments uh regarding this?
The only thing I have to ask is what do we need? Just a consensus of everybody to move this forward?
I, I would believe so. It's not necessarily an action item. Uh, I think if anybody has any other questions regarding this, um, they can certainly reach out to Cory, but I, I would have to say that um I, I feel like this is favorable to move forward for a uh July agenda. I don't.
So do I. Bizzard does as well.
All right. Um, and certainly we don't, yeah, I, I think the addition of a staff member, a part-time basis, it, it just gives um more visibility out in our community. Uh, we don't have to um, it, I, me personally, um, over the past several years, I don't feel like we're a priority with McKenna or with AGS because they serve multiple municipalities. And they always kind of have to um circle back around because we're not first and foremost on their mind. Having somebody in-house um or complaint uh driven, um, you know, because we are complaint-driven, we're not going out and hunting and looking for things. Uh, I think it's just giving us the ability to do better for our residents and our businesses in town, um, if we make this move forward. So I believe we do have uh consensus then Cory, um, that you could bring this forward for a July action item.
Okay, thank you. And I, I've been taking notes and I think some of the questions we can try to think about more and address better um as we keep going forward. Uh, I do wanna make two points known. You know, the first is that the position as envisioned, because it has both the zoning and the code enforcement side, you know, it, it's, we're gonna be looking for a, a, a really good candidate that can deal with both sides of that because on the one hand, you know, you need to be able to work with people and, and help them realize their dreams uh of the thing they wanna build or the addition they wanna put on. And sometimes, you know, working with somebody, even visiting their house and, and physically looking at their site and how setbacks work, I have found in previous experiences that that can help defray, you know, frustrations or anger that somebody may have over, you know, what setback they're allowed to have, for example. Um, but on the flip side, you also have to be able to tactfully work with somebody when frankly, they're probably not very happy with you because you are telling them that, you know, your barn is falling down or, you know, something else is going on that, that is posing a, a danger um on, on a property. And so tha- that's the first thing is like whether we have a contracted person or a, a staff person, you know, we're still gonna have issues where somebody is just not, not happy and that they could be coming to council. Um, and so I think, you know, you're gonna see that no matter what. Hopefully we can, by working with people, we can have a lot better outcomes than not throughout those processes. And then the second piece, which I noted in the memo, but I, I hadn't brought up yet, is that I do believe that there still will be cases where we will want to have professional planning or zoning technical assistance from a company like McKenna or somewhere else. Um, because we, we frankly, if we had a major site plan come in uh for the industrial park or the um, the vacant land out by I ninety-six and, and working through our zoning code and ordinances and that process, y- you may wanna have some assistance there. And the way that I envision that works is many communities um for like engineering reviews and planning and zoning reviews, they bake the cost of those services into the fees for the applicant. And so if you're coming to a small town and you've got a major plan and you don't have somebody on staff that can do a stormwater review, you know, you have an outside consultant help you with those items. And so that would be how we would likely deal with that if there was something that was above and beyond what we felt like we could handle as a staff. One thing that I've noticed working here um with, with Scott, who's touches zoning and, and planning um with Tim Perron and even with Rachel and myself, is that there's a lot of n- combined knowledge um, you know, when it comes to these things. But, you know, sometimes having that planning perspective is helpful. And, and I've, I've experienced that and you know, we've had um, you know, many cases where I felt like McKenna's really helped us on uh, you know, a site issue or uh zoning text amendments and things like that. And so I think having some type of assistance is still gonna be part of this, this whole thing. Um, and I just wanna be clear about that, that it's, it's not a complete separation from having that outside resource. It's just structured differently and it's not the day-to-day planning, zoning enforcement uh, uh contract.
Thank you, Cory. Appreciate that. Um, moving along on the agenda, uh, we did not receive any correspondence. Uh, we did receive uh Cory's uh city manager report. Um, is there, do you, does anybody have any questions for Cory regarding that? Or is there anything you wanna add, Cory?
Yeah, I, I do wanna just talk about the boardwalk for a minute. It, there's a paragraph in there. And so this will largely be a refresher, but we have, we have tentatively been awarded what's called an M dot Transportation Alternatives Program or TAP grant to replace the boardwalk with an asphalt path from the North Putnam Bridge down to basically the end of the parking lot that's behind the uh. Yes, thank you. Um, thanks, John. And so the DDA had a path to fund that, both the match and the engineering. And because of a, a revenue issue that we encountered, our revenue forecast decreased. And so we were back to the drawing board over the last month. We've been really spinning our wheels trying to figure this out because we don't wanna let two hundred fifty thousand dollars go. Um. And as of this moment, I think we've got a path where our Economic Development Corporation is going to loan the money to the DDA. And there will be a repayment process for the DDA that takes advantage of the fact that the DDA has two bonds that fall off of the payment schedule in twenty twenty-four. And so they basically pay like five grand a year for four years. And then in the fifth year, when those bonds go off, they've got freed up resources to pay the EDC back. We like this because it gives the EDC a project. They've been sitting on their um, you know, seventy thousand dollars-ish for a couple of years since the uh what was called the fifteen hundred building, which is where Old Nation is, since that's was sold from this uh, from the EDC. And for the DDA, it gives them the resources to infuse the, the match. What it also means though is that the engineering pers- this engineering costs of the project, the DDA will have to forego some of the things that they normally do. Notably, their facade improvement program is the biggest um thing that they're foregoing in order to, to meet this uh, this need. This was all done in an attempt to keep the project out of the general fund. Um, and, and with where it started, you know, thirty years ago, it was a DDA project. And so I just want council to be aware. I know many of, some of you serve on the different boards and have been involved in this process. Um, but it, it's an important thing that we, we keep making pro- progress on. And that was why I just wanted to verbally talk about it in addition to the, the memo, so.
Right. Um, I would say if anybody has questions regarding that, um, to follow up with Cory, um, outside of this meeting, um, because that is a, that is something that could take uh a little bit of time. Um. Chief, are you still there?
I am still here and I have nothing to report.
All right. Well, thank you for being here this evening. Uh, we did have the AGS report attached uh for you to uh read through. Um, I don't really, I know we've had a DDA meeting, um, a couple uh small committee uh meetings. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
Oh, meeting-wise, no. I have not had one.
Okay.
Um, I did have, this is Noah. I did have an opportunity to attend the fire board meeting. And um, I was there as the substitute for Jeff. But a lot of discussion occurred around the appointing of members at large position. So we went way back in time, reviewed the whole process. And um, they're going to be posting a couple positions. Um, the representative member at large, the alternate uh beginning July one of twenty twenty, so they're gonna be taking applications. They're gonna post those at the Williamson Leroy Fire Stations. And they wanna get it up on couple, on the NISA board and they wanna get it up a couple other places. But we, we put a process that's sort of clear going through and, you know, even if somebody's uh in the position now and it comes up, they have to sign up. They have to follow the same process. It's just not rubber-stitched in.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Noah.
Good update.
All right. Thank you. Um, moving along, uh, we have an opportunity for audience participation. Anybody out there that would like to say anything? And Earl's waving his hand.
Hi.
I think. He's saying hello. Hi, Earl. Yep. Go ahead, Earl.
Hey, thank you. Uh, I'd like to thank council for their support for everything and thank the city staff for um continuing with their uh efforts to get the uh uh riverfront uh enhanced in any way possible. It's our most underused resource for both business and quality of life. And I appreciate uh Cory and his staff for looking under every rock to figure a way to uh, uh, use a pot of money that's gonna go away unless we grab it. And so I really, really, really appreciate the staff for working under duress, really uh in the last few months to find a way to, to, to make this happen. So uh, it's not a cost, it's an investment. And I really appreciate uh what the staff has done to uh find a way to an end. So thank you, council and the staff. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Earl. Okay, I'm gonna go around the uh board with uh council amendments. Dan Rines.
No comment.
All right, Gene Smith?
Uh, no comment. Thanks.
All right, John Bizzard?
Yes, I'd like to uh reiterate kind of Cory's thing about the boardwalk. I really think the EDC and the DDA working together, that'll work really great. I think it's a big safety issue and Scott's pointed that out to us over the years about the repairs. And then during Jubilee, having a caution tape off areas. So that's a good thing. Um, the trash, I'm glad that we tackled that. Um, I think that's a huge thing. I've worked in the trash area hauling and things and going to the transfer station and for an example, I believe per bag charge can be up to nine dollars. Um, don't quote me on that, but it, it's kind of all over the board sometimes. Um, other than that, uh, I don't have anything else at this time.
All right. Thank you. Jeff Rollin?
Oh, thanks, Sammy. Uh, solid meeting, everyone.
Okay. Uh, Jeff Weiss?
I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Noah Ballinger?
I'm good for this evening. No more comments.
All right. I am good for this evening as well. Thank you all so much for being available this evening. And I will go ahead and call to adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-three. Thank you.